And Bob Balkin and, um, and, um, No Neely. They have Kathy and Henry Campbell and I have been working with them about the issues on Slate Quarry Road. And they're out there this week doing a half inch, um, micro resurfacing for skid, uh, for the skid issue. So between that and the new array of signage and our, uh, lower speed limit, we, um, should see improvements on the road. That's it. Does anybody else have any other announcements? Elaine, Bruce, Joe? Okay, great. Um. I will, um. Thanks, John. It was just a request to go out of order, which is fine. Let's come back to, uh, prior minutes and Jim Reardon wanted to present us with something. Why don't you come on up? Hi, Jim.
An extensive stack of paperwork there because there are a lot of pictures. But, you know, I had spoken with Joe and Alan about this previously. And, uh, you know, I have a, uh, a deep affliction for the outdoors and for the environment and our natural surroundings and beauty. And I see what is becoming a problem in my eyes, maybe not in other people's eyes, but I'm here to voice my opinion regarding, uh, signs alongside the roads. Of course, it's election season, so we have, we are besieged with lots of election and campaign signs, which I understand there's a need for them to be there. But I would question whether there's a need for one to be there every 50 feet or every 50 yards. You know, it's almost as though the guy with the most signs wins or, you know, I can hear the battle cry. I'm gonna out-sign him and on to victory. There's a lot of organizations and businesses, in fact, that, and there's pictures there to document this, that put their signs out and then leave them there and never pick them up. I took all of those pictures that are there yesterday. And they're signs that date back into September from events that were held in the community that still remain standing or laying on the ground. Some of the signs are poorly placed and they blow over, they're on the shoulders of the road or they're laying on the ground. There's a pile of them up at the corner of 9G by the telephone pole in the parking lot where they're just garbage laying there. So, you know, I think it's a blight on our community. The locations that I have photographed, I only did five locations and basically they're in the gateways to our community. So anybody that's coming here for the first time is just besieged with all of these, what I feel are, really looks garish and offensive. So, uh, you know, I'm bringing it to your attention. I know there are sign laws and I know there needs to be, uh, some type of ability for people and organizations to put out temporary signs, but I think it's really getting to a point where it's out of control. And if we don't do something about it, it's just gonna get worse and worse. So that's why I'm here. That's why I presented that with you.
I'll make sure the board members get this.
I would be perfectly willing if somebody wants to sit down and talk the issue over and maybe come up with a plan on what can be addressed. I'd be perf- perfectly willing to volunteer to do that.
I'll tell you that our town law doesn't allow, um, these temporary, um, signs that solicit business. So we are aware of it. Our zoning enforcement officer was going to write something up for us that we could read here. Political so- signs are exempt. They're free, they're First Amendment protected. They are, however, we're not allowed to have them over a certain size. So the big billboards are illegal. The small signs, I think anything under three square feet are fine. But we do have a law and there's a fine attached for people who put up signs soliciting, uh, bus- soliciting business on a private property if the contractor's doing. We have a pretty, it's pretty well laid out in our zoning law. We're aware of it. We know that this needs to be, um, um, looked at. This would be something that our zoning administrator, zoning enforcement officer would do. We are also thinking maybe to have a deputy, which is something Hyde Park is looking into for sign removal and ticket writing.
I know, you know, the gun club, Neighbor's Gun Club, a couple of years ago, we had signs for our turkey shoot, which is a once annual fundraising event that we have. And zoning enforcement officer at that time confiscated them and then we were made to pay a $100 fee, which, okay, if that's the law, that's fine. But it doesn't seem to apply to everybody. And one of the pictures that I have in there, in fact, is for a lawn sale today with no date. And I know it's for a business in Red Hook and it says Route 9, Red Hook. And it's for a permanent business. So they're using our roadside as a billboard.
You're absolutely right. The political signs are exempt except for size and, you know, thank you. It's, it's an issue.
Yeah. And again, on the political signs, I would question whether we need one every 50 feet for the same candidate. Thank you. Good night, Alan.
Bye, Jim. Thank you.
We've been following the custom after the election. Each, uh, party picks up the signs that they, uh, put out. Generally, that's done the next day or two days afterwards.
No, I think there is an issue with the solicitation signs and certainly big billboards are against.
Yes.
We have several that have been grandfathered in, but they're, they have to be removed. What was it, seven years after the COM Plan or something, the billboards, Bruce? Do you remember? Okay. Um, I'm gonna go back to, uh, approval of prior minutes. Can I do them all together? Can I bundle them? I'd like to make a motion to approve prior minutes from September 22nd, 2014, our regular board meeting, September 23rd, our special board meeting, October 1st, a special board meeting, October 6th, a special board meeting, and October 7th, a special board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'm sorry. Oh, would you like a microphone?
Thanks.
Any committee early exam reports? Yeah, one second. Any, Bruce?
Well, let's, Nancy.
Anybody?
She's the historian. So I've got some.
Great. Thanks for coming, Nancy.
I think, as you know, that I've been very concerned about our archaeology from the Thompson Mazzarella Park. And, um, so I wanted to report that, um, the, um, Dr. Linder, who had, who has done the archaeology, has been down to the Star Library and we've decided on a space to, uh, make a display there that will, um, be available for the schoolchildren to come and see and the public in general and all like that. So that will be educational and I'm pleased about that. But I'm still very concerned about the archaeology artifacts not being in the town of Rhinebeck and under our control. And, um, so I had been in touch with Nancy Herter from the state and she is, uh, very, um, agreeable for us to have the archaeology artifacts stored in the archive room at the, um, Star Library, which is under the, uh, control of the Rhinemick Historical Society. It's a locked room and it has, uh, climate control. So then Mr. Linder, Dr. Linder came down and looked at the space and he's agreeable that it is suitable. And I have looked for cabinets and the cabinets would stack. So there'd be three cabinets and, um, one of them would contain the samples of the dirt that they had, um, collected. And the others would contain, um, this, these trays that have the archaeology artifacts in them. And they'd all be locked so that there's two security measures here, both the locked cabinets and the locked room for the archive. So that there would be a limited number of people that would have keys to the cabinets, probably the archivist and myself. The, um, the thought is that, um, if there were going to be a study done by any qualified archaeologist, that we would be supervising their use of the materials and, um, that the materials could be then used for that kind of a study. And if there was going to be a display of materials, we would have a qualified person, um, decide on how the, the display would be organized and how to protect it from any kind of pilfering. And so that is, um, I think, um, a lot of progress that we're making. And, uh, I'm also looking into funding, uh, sources for the cabinets. And, um, I do think that, um, that way we can be assured that, uh, the, um, archive artifacts won't be lost, uh, from the room at Bard and they won't, will, um, be available for us when we want to use them, that we won't be restricted by, um, the use of the labs where they're currently, uh, housed now or by any future changes in personnel at Bard. So that was my report. And, um, if we have an opportunity to meet as a board, um, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Thanks, Nancy. Anybody have any, anything else?
I, I got a few things.
Great.
Sorry, I'm, I'm still working on the Vandenberg Cove tentative budget for, for next year. I'm gonna run that by the, the, um, committee people and then we'll get it into Shelley to get included for people to look at. Normally, we don't approve it. We don't have the hearing till the last meeting of the year, anyway.
As an aside to that, maybe in our next meeting, we should have a, an item on it if we wanna proceed with the county water and wastewater, you know?
Yeah.
Maybe you can form this committee that you're meeting with on the budget that, uh, we're gonna have this session and try to make a decision. I don't know if they're aware of it or not.
Yeah, they're here. They were here and they'll be.
Yeah.
As far as the heating system goes, the engineering has all been completed. Bobby's looked it over and there's gonna be controls in every room, so everybody will be happy. You know, the-
That's the key to happiness.
Yeah, well, it's one of the keys and it's gonna be lower fuel costs. However, due to the timing, the engineers are recommending that we don't start the project until after the heating season. Because we could be out for-
Weeks.
Weeks during this heating season. So they're, they're suggesting that we wait until it's warmer again.
April.
That's something we can take up. As far as, um, I don't know, Bobby told me he's keep getting more modified estimates for the steps. I think he's got two so far.
Can I, um, we had a resident who'd like to donate services and materials to the town. And, um, Chris. And Bobby's meeting with them on Friday.
Okay.
You should be there too. You know, I can, I just found out about that today.
Okay.
Anything, it's like a, anything above, I, I think it, it's like a four or $5,000 donation of services and material and an approach. Nice.
Maybe on that, uh, we're probably gonna set up a budget meeting tonight. Maybe, uh, we can talk about the steps at that and move ahead on that because, uh, weather's gonna get cold and it's gonna be a problem.
Do we have to go out to bid again with this, Bruce?
No, we've, we've done the formal bidding. What we've done is we've asked for, uh, modified thing, which allows us, based on the threshold, to get estimates, verbal or written estimates, which is what we're doing.
A new person could bid on it if they wanted to.
Yeah.
All right.
The one thing that Bobby told me was that the two masons that have gotten back so far do not want to use the stone that's there. They don't wanna reuse it. So I don't know why, maybe it's the bonding or whatever. They're suggesting thinner stone and we could sell the, um, the stone that's there, reclaim it and sell it because it's probably worth a lot. But we don't want that just sitting someplace.
No, it's nice stone.
That's very valuable and we'll walk away.
So they don't think, uh, that it's a good idea to get thicker, uh, bluestone and make a solid step across?
I don't know.
That was one idea that, uh, was floated.
Yeah, well, if you, I think what they're saying, we'll have to wait till we see the, I think John has some of the paperwork, right?
Seems as if that's-
Bobby said you had. I, I think it's if you have a good foundation, then the thickness doesn't matter that much. It's, if, if it heaves, then the stone will, the thicker will last a little bit longer, but, and there's a huge cost difference in that. Uh, as far as, the other thing I have is Linda Murray from the REC Committee has arranged for, um, tumbling sessions for this year. This, we, I'm not asking for approval yet because we still need to confirm with Chancellor that it's available, that the dates that we need are available. It'll be six weeks, two different age groups, probably on a Friday night, or Friday nights. And, um, this, this is something we had done a few years ago. Remember, we used to have our gymnastics program, then we went to a dance tumbling kind of thing and then to a tumbling. Last year, I don't think we had anything for the, in this space. So this, this is good. It's gonna be, we'll, we'll give you a proposal on the price and everything next meeting, hopefully.
Can the REC Committee come to one of our budget meetings? Do you think that would be helpful?
Yeah. I don't know. Yeah.
Approach or something, something to-
Yeah. We could do that. That's all I had.
Thank you. Heating, okay. Joe, do you have anything?
No.
Elaine?
Nope.
Okay. Um, thanks, Bruce. Should we move on to our, uh, resolutions? I'll make a resolution for, uh, 2014, 323, preliminary accounts payable abstracts 10, vouchers 1,139 through 1,218, 51 checks totaling $82,793.37. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2014, 324, preliminary capital projects abstract, one check in the amount of $2,078.34. May I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, which one is this?
This is our capital projects abstract.
This is the $2,078?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain on this.
Very good. Uh, why are you abstaining, Joe?
I don't wanna tell you why.
Oh, okay.
I'm not obligated to.
Okay. May I, uh, I got lost where we are. Do we have a second on this?
Yeah, any second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Joe's abstaining, so moved. I'll make a resolution for 2014, 325, for our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
I'll second with discussion.
Okay. Um, discussion?
Okay. This, this year, the budget was different. It, it was so that departments could move things around without having to, and, and so I'm not sure why some of these are on here.
Such as?
Such as the first one that they, I'll, I'll start with the first one. They're both contractual, they're both code 400s. That's something that they can do by themselves. And while I understand that it's a, um, a courtesy to come to us, it's, it's, they have that ability to, to do that without us. So, so I don't understand. And, and it's based somewhat on what we've talked about the other night, that people don't necessarily understand when we, what we do with budgets. And so I think maybe we need to reinforce.
I mean, I don't have a, I mean, I understand they're moving from consulting to, you know, post, from postage, so it is, it is a little bit of a change. If you wanna revisit how we do it, that's fine. I don't mind it. I like knowing the budget transfers.
Okay, well, but very specifically, the recommendation from the bookkeeper was to, to do it the way we did it because of this. And, and so I'm wondering what, you know, is it your preference or is, is it education or what is it?
No, I haven't asked for this. This is from our bookkeeper. I believe this is just her, been her practice.
Okay.
If we wanna change it, we can certainly discuss that as a board. But I think this is how, you know, since I've been on the board, we've always done this. I, I realize we changed the budgeting slightly last year to include monies under contingencies or, you know, consultants, but I thought it was so that departments had to come to us for approval. I didn't realize it went the other way, but no, this is absolutely no instruction from me. It's coming from the keeping department.
But I think money coming out of contingencies, that's not part of it. That we should see-
Right, that's my understanding.
Yeah, we should see that.
But, but that's, that's what it's supposed to be.
Yes.
Anything for capital, it has to come to us. That's why we grew the capital the way we did.
Oh, okay, so you're agreeing with me on contingencies.
Yes.
That should come to us.
The point was that if it's a contractual line item and you, you needed more money in it and you have that money someplace else within your department, you have the ability to move it. All you gotta do is tell the bookkeeper that you're moving it.
Okay. I mean, we can certainly talk to her about this as a group, but this was absolutely no special instruction. I think it's just-
Yeah, okay, I just, there, there seems to be difficulty in change and so. I, I thought it was a good thing because, you know, we did not file this budget with the county. We filed a different budget with the county, so.
Okay.
Look, in that connection, um, just looking at, um, program for the aging, we got two pluses. Don't we need a minus someplace?
No, it's revenue that came in from insurance. It was an insurance claim.
So it's extra money that we have, so we can have the pluses.
Right. We have to pay for the, the van. It was a bump on the van, that specifically. Is there any further discussion or any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. A, Resolution 2014, 326, propose local law to override the tax levy limit for the fiscal year 2015 pursuant to general municipal law, Section C, Section 3C, for commencement of the local law adoption process. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion for the public? I believe this, we have done this every year since the tax cap has been up. In case we have to override it, we have this in place. It's, uh, we have to pass this in order to override the law. Not that we are. If we do, we have it in place. Any questions, further discussion?
So this just schedules a public hearing, uh, if we want to.
Yes.
And it sets a date of October 27. I don't know if we're gonna finish the budget by October 27 or not.
That's our next town board meeting. I, I'm assuming we could, you know, um-
So we could hear the public, uh, but not pass it?
Hold it open.
And then hold it open.
Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? So this means we absolutely can't override the tax cap. We're passing this, which we do every year.
I just gave you my vote.
Hey, Joe.
Thank you. Tell it to pass.
I'm sorry, two?
Did you vote yea or nay?
We voted yea.
Joe did too?
I voted yes, but who voted, I, I understand Elaine, your vote. Is there another one?
Bruce.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I, well, I guess it doesn't pass, does it?
No, doesn't pass. Resolution 20-
But again, this was just purely in case.
Resolution 2014, 327, setting a budget public hearing for our 2015 town budget for Wednesday, the 5th. Uh, may I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
I'd like to make it a little earlier if possible. Can we do it at 5:30?
That's gonna be hard for me because I don't get off of work until 5:00. So the earliest I could get here is like 5:45, but closer to 6:00.
We'll leave it at 6:00 then.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Is, is, this is just to release it to the public or is this public input?
It's our, release it to the public and have public input.
So we're gonna post it ahead of time?
Uh, well, it's all posted now. It'll be posted as we go, yes. We have to do it between the 4th and the 7th, I believe, so we're scheduling it for this Wednesday.
But I would hope we'd have a pretty final budget to have a hearing on. At least, uh, we are presenting it by unanimous or majority vote.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
And Elizabeth, we're gonna come back about setting another meeting, budget meeting.
Sure, yep. Oh, you wanna do that, um, let's finish these and then we'll do that. Resolution 2014, 328, bids for sale of used highway equipment. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Um, there is one, um. Any questions, discussion? I'll just say that, um, I spoke to Kathy today and we have one bid on our, our, our 36 Pro chainsaw. It did not come with a, a non collusion statement. The bidder forgot to do that. The bidder will give it to us. If we award the bid to the bidder, Kathy will not release it to the bidder without the non collusion statement. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2014, 329, inter municipal agreement with Dutchess County for snow removal and ice control services. This, uh, may I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, for the public, this is a, uh, inter municipal agreement we enter into with the county for, uh, road plowing services. And, um, it's the same as last year. I think we, they cut our routes a little bit last year and I believe we're keeping to the same schedule. Any further discussion?
Didn't I see something, a letter from the county asking about taking over more routes and they would pay us?
Uh, you, yes, I believe so. And Kathy's plow routes are already too long because she's down 2.3.
So she's looked at that and she doesn't wanna do it.
This is what she wants to do, yeah. They cut us, I think they took River Road back la- last year.
That's my reference.
And we protested that. And I think they're, they'd like us to take, uh, I believe it's Violet Hill, but I don't think that Kathy's comfortable with that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution, uh, number eight, um, 2014, 330, tax certiorary proceedings, Round Lake Road. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
For the public, um, this is, uh, from our certiorary attorney, Karen Hagstrom, and with the, um, from the assessors that we settle this, this cert case. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution, um, number nine, tab nine, 2014, 331, repair of town cemetery wall and tree replacement. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
You wanna, oh?
Sure, this is, um, we talked about this at previous meetings. In July, there was a bad storm. Lightning struck a tree. Tree came down on the stone wall and did some pretty significant damage in one area. damage in one area. I contacted our insurance company to find out if it's covered. It is covered, it will not raise our rate to put a claim in to fix the wall, the damage from the storm specifically, that section, and also to replace the tree. So this resolution would allow us to do that, it would authorize the lowest bidder who came in and did the estimate for the stone wall, and also the estimate for the tree.
So my understanding is the insurance company's gonna pay everything?
Yep, exactly.
Good work.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Tab ten, resolution 2014-332, town hall uses, usage application for the Girl Scouts on November first, 2014. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2014-333, contract with Harris Computer Systems for our tax collector software. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
This is info tax software from Harris Computer System. It will allow our tax collector to post all the public information that people call town hall for on our website. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2014-334, purchase of a new dog kennel fencing and raising the existing grade. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Taken.
Any discussion?
Do you want me to explain what this is?
Yep.
So, we've had extensive conversations about the dog kennel located at the highway department, and the resurfacing of the highway department over the years has created a higher grade where the highway department and parking lot sits compared to where the dog kennel is. So what's happening is during storms, and including rain and snow, the water is running down into the kennels. It's done pretty extensive damage to the kennels. There's a lot of water damage that was done to some of the beams that actually hold the structure up. We think it's probably worse than you can even see when you look at this, where the beams are starting to rot, but nobody's picked up the building to see. It's been recommended by our supervisor of maintenance that we replace the building because chances are there's a lot more damage than we can see on the, on the surface. And we also would need to raise the existing grade that the kennel sits on now to prevent this from happening in the future with a new kennel. So the resolution would provide a new kennel instead of constantly band-aiding a kennel that is clearly in need of replacement, in my view. It's, it's nearly thirty years old, it's never been replaced, and the water over the years has created a lot of damage to the kennels, and has put the animals that are housed there at risk. So this would allow us to authorize the, the funding that was, the bids that were, or the estimates, rather, that were given to us by the supervisor of the maintenance department for, that would cover the cost for the, a new kennel, new chain fencing, because that has also rotted over the years and has created, some of the rot is so bad that it's created holes in the chain link fence where small animals were able to get through. So it would also replace the fence, and it would allow us to raise the grade to prevent this from happening in the future. So that's what this resolution would do. And I think it's really time we invest in a new kennel. That the maximum it would cost us, there's, there's something written in here that says no more than fifteen thousand, which keeps it under, within the bids or the estimates that we received. And I think it's a small price to pay for a, a benefit to the community, to the animals, and something that I think really needs its, its time. I think the cost over time of constantly replacing the parts and pieces that are rotting is just gonna cost us more to band-aid, and we're eventually gonna get to this place anyway. We may as well do it before we continue to invest in band-aiding problems that are pretty severe. So I'm asking that we vote on this to just replace with a new kennel.
Any further discussion or questions?
I, I would like to, if it's possible, and if I, I think there's additional money from the Dyson Foundation, and so I would like to take the building that's there and move it up to Stone Church, and use it as a shed for the dog park, and, and half, split it in half, and half for the soccer field.
I don't have any problem with that.
If I can get the money from Dyson.
That's fine. I mean, what, what could be great to reuse it for something? Any further discussion, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Twenty-eight years, we got a new dog kennel.
Oh, the animals are gonna be so happy.
Tab thirteen, resolution 2014-35, uh, 2014-35, I think we're, uh, three thirty-five, approving the winter farmer's market for 2014, 2015 agreement with the Rhinebeck Farmer's Market. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
This approves the Rhinebeck Farmer's Market to use it December through April to remove garbage, and an additional two hundred dollar cleaning fee. It's everything laid out. I gotta tell you, I have concerns about the steps not being done, and people coming in on weekends in ice. Do we know any timeline for that?
Well, according to Bobby, he's available to start next week, and he'd like to. So maybe we'll have to have a special meeting once we get all the costs in, after he's talked to the guy on Friday.
Right, that's why I suggested we tie it in with our budget meeting and move on it.
Should we, I mean, you know, we've agreed to let them come. I am just concerned with safety and the steps in the ice. You think we can get it done before December?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we have to, because otherwise we're gonna be in the freeze, and we're gonna work.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2014, missing numbers on this. Oh, no, that's not on here, this is an old, I think we're done. It's our last resolution, right?
Wow, that's a record.
Well, we're up to new business.
Okay, um, new business.
I guess I have a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. The first is the employee's handbook. I've asked Michael Richardson for, I sent him our existing employee's handbook, and he suggested that we bifurcate it, so into two pieces of literature. One would be employment practices and compliance, that would be applicable to all employees, and a second publication quote-unquote a manual that only will deal with compensation and benefits, and it would be only applicable to non-union employees. The union employees, the benefits and conditions of employment are set forth in the contract. That way, it'll be a shorter document for the union people to read, and for the non-union people, they can decide which or both that they should memorize. I don't see any problem with bifurcating it, and he said that seems to be the trend with respect to all the manuals that he updates. And he gave me an estimate of a thousand dollars, although he's asking whether we have it in a Word document that he can, a soft copy that he can work with. I don't know if we have it.
I think we do, yeah.
So...
It's like a twenty-fifth generation...
Okay, so it'd really have to be put into a Word document. I don't know if his thousand dollar estimate would cover that, and how we get that done, but some way, we'll have to get it into a Word document. And we talked about this in our budget sessions, and we decided we really did wanna go ahead with it. We can go ahead with it this year, and we have appropriated up to four thousand dollars, either three or four thousand, three, three thousand to get it done, so it looks like this estimate is below it, so... Does anybody have any problem with him dividing it into two?
Uh-uh.
Then, so I'll tell him to go ahead. Second thing is, I think we gotta set a date for another session on the budget.
Any other new business? No? Okay, would we like to set a couple budget workshops?
And Elaine, are, are you available weekends or not?
Oh, yeah, I'm definitely available on weekends.
I'm not, Joe.
Okay. And during the week, Elaine, you can do...
Six o'clock is really the best, because with rush hour traffic, I'm lucky if I get back by five forty-five.
Do we wanna try and get this week or next week?
This week would be literally impossible for me. I'm booked every single night the rest of this week.
Okay, so how about, I can't do the twenty or twenty-first. How about the twenty-second, twenty-third, or twenty-fourth?
I can't do the twenty-second, I can do the twentieth and twenty-first. I can do the twenty-third.
I can't do the twenty-third.
I can't do the...
Okay, how about the week of the twenty-seventh?
Well, that's really putting it off.
Well, do we wanna do one this week? There's nothing, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen?
I can't do it this week, I'm, I've got commitments every night this week.
Joe, Bruce?
Did you do it the weekend?
No, I'm not available.
I can't, I, this weekend, I can't, I'm volunteering for the Woodstock Film Festival. I'm literally, I'm booked the rest of this week and weekend.
Bruce, Joe, do you wanna meet fifteen, sixteen, seventeen?
I can do seventeen, it's the only day I've got.
Okay, how about...
Well, probably with the fifteenth is we have that shared services meeting that Bruce and I are going to, begins at four-thirty.
Okay, how about twenty-second, twenty-third?
I can't, I won't, I take it back. I, I won't be in town on the twenty-second.
I can do the twenty-second and the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-third and the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-second and the twenty-fourth.
Joe, twenty-second?
I can do the twenty-second.
I can't, I can't do the twenty-second, I could do twenty-third. The twenty-fourth...
I can do the twenty-fourth.
Can we finish by eight o'clock, since I just bought a ticket for something? Do you wanna stop? What time can you get here, Elaine?
Six o'clock.
Should we go try six to seven-thirty?
Okay, and what about the twenty-third or the twenty-second? We don't all have to be there.
I can do the twenty-second.
So can I.
What time?
Six o'clock.
Okay, and what about, what about...
I will be here at the twenty-second, so...
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, should we get another? Or, how about something, let's set something for the week of the twenty-seventh as well. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, what does everybody have?
Well, twenty-seven, we have a board meeting, what about Tuesday night, the twenty-eighth?
That's fine.
What time? Six plus, and why don't we plan on staying?
After the board meeting, you mean?
No.
No, the twenty-eighth we're talking about.
Twenty-eighth, okay. Yeah, I can do the twenty-eighth, Tuesday, the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
How about the twenty-ninth and thirtieth?
Thirtieth, I can do...
I could do twenty-ninth and thirtieth, so...
I can do the twenty-ninth, and I can't do the thirtieth.
So we'll schedule, we'll schedule twenty-second, twenty-four, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty at six P.M., as needed, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the thir, the thirtieth?
We have the twenty-second, twenty-fourth, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth at six P.M.
You can do the ten, you can do the thirtieth at a different time if you want, because I won't be able to make it.
Which other night can you not do it?
That's the only night I can. I can do the twenty-second, twenty-fourth, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth. I just can't do the thirtieth.
Okay, we'll, we'll leave it.
I'm sorry, so what are the dates? 'Cause I was trying to...
Twenty-second?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-four, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty.
Okay.
Six P.M. Any further business?
Yeah, I'd like to change our, one of our official newspapers. So I don't care who we, the other one is we use, but since the Observer's gone...
Sad that the Observer's gone.
Shocking. Do we need to decide it tonight, or should we think about it and then decide?
No, we don't need to decide. I mean, it's for bids and stuff, right? I mean, the other local newspaper is bi-weekly, so it doesn't work for bids. I'll have the clerks do a, a rate check, though.
Okay. So it'll be on the agenda the next meeting?
I hope so.
All right.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna abstain.
Second.
You can stay here by yourself. Thank you very much, everybody. Good night.